The October 1st, 2014 meeting of the Milton School Committee will come to order. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please join me for a brief moment of silence for Patrick Crowe, who was a member of our Milton Public Schools family for over 15 years as a custodian and who passed away very recently. Thank you. With regard to tonight's agenda, a few changes. Under Finance Subcommittee, we will be moving items B, C, and E, fiscal 16 to fiscal 20, capital requests, the end of year financials, and the draft end of year report to our meeting on the 15th. And there will be no executive session this evening. With that, I would approve the October 1st agenda and ask if there's anyone for citizen speak? One person? One up? Yeah? And if you would, just give your name and address as you start.
Hi, my name's Cole Kelly. I live at 54 Belcher Circle in the East Milton neighborhood. Basically, I was asked to speak on behalf of the parents of the Collicott kids who ride the East Milton bus. Basically, it was sort of brought to our attention that there was proposal from the administration to increase the fees from the discounted rate of 225 per student and I'm not sure, I think it was 600 per family to 375 per student and 900 per family. So I got an email of a letter from Glenn Pavlichek. Is Glenn here? Oh, hi Glenn. And Glenn, as you know, the Assistant Superintendent for Business. And the letter was addressed to the members of the school committee regarding the fee increase. So in your letter Glenn, there was a list of other communities with the fees that they charge, including the family rate for the purpose of comparing rates. You know, I couldn't help but notice that Milton already has the highest family rate on that list. So if what other towns are charging families who live inside the two-mile boundary is relevant, you know, to the debate about the bus fees, then, you know, I think it's fair to mention how our neighbor, the town of Canton, charges their families. I did a little bit of research, I did some homework, and according to the Canton Public Schools website, the fee for riders inside the two-mile boundary is 200 per student and a maximum of 550 per family. The exception to the fee is students who walk on or cross Route 138. They don't collect a fee from those families for safety reasons. You know, I didn't come here tonight to ask for a decrease in the fee or to have the fee waived, you know, for safety reasons like they do in Canton. I think, you know, we're all well aware of the dangers of crossing Granite Ave and Bryan Ave, you know, in East Milton Square during the morning commute. And, you know, the need for the bus is as great now as it's ever been. You know, it seems in the four years, I have a third grader at Collicott, you know, we've noticed an increase of from maybe 10 to 20 kids at our bus stop. So, you know, I know it started out as a shuttle, but, you know, now it's a real legit bus route. You know, I think our situation in East Milton is similar to the Canton situation. But, you know, we're not looking for, you know, we're not looking for a free ride. You know, we just think that the bus is a necessity for safety reasons and we're just asking that the current fee remain in effect.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Walker. First, I'd like to invite to the table our special ed administrator, Karen Klasby, Director of Pupil Personnel. And tonight, Ms. Klasby has a presentation on Special Education Strategies and National Best Practices for Closing the Achievement Gap. Welcome Karen.
Jim, don't you mind, I'm gonna do it. You just wait here. No. If I hit this one, we'll make it go. Go on. So, hi. Thank you for having me. Sorry for the delay there. So, we were asked, well, let me start at the beginning. We were asked to talk about what we're doing here in Milton Public Schools to address the achievement gap specifically with our special education children. So, we're gonna start by maybe defining the problem a little bit clearly. So, students who have disabilities who receive special education are viewed as a subgroup when MCAS collects all of the, excuse me?
Take the microphone?
I'm sorry.
It's not good to be able to hear you at home.
Okay. So, students with disabilities are considered to be a subgroup with respect to gathering the data that explains how they did on MCAS, their results. And when their results are compared to that of their general education peers, the difference between those scores is referred to as an achievement gap. In the 2014 MCAS data, we just put them all together in a group and looked at all of our special ed students who scored in the proficient and advanced category in each of them and compared them to our general ed kids. And in this simplistic chart, you can see that there is a gap in ELA, there is a gap in math, and there is a gap in science. Is that on? So, we put all of our special ed kids together and all together, they scored 40% of them, proficient or advanced, whereas our general ed kids, it was 88%. So, the difference between them is 48 points. That's the gap that we're looking at. As I'm sure you know, we could take those by grade, by school, in any number of ways, but this is basically what the gap is that people are referring to. So, there's definitely an achievement gap here in Milton. And as a result of that, the following questions were posed to the administration. What is the district doing to close this achievement gap? What research is available to address this issue? What's the district plan moving forward? What are our expected outcomes and what resources are needed in order to move us along? So, in order to really address those questions, I think it's important that we first understand these three things. In conversations we've had internally, some of this stuff keeps coming up, though I thought we should start with this. What defines this particular subgroup? What kinds of disabilities do our Milton kids have right now? And what level of support and specially designed instruction is needed to enable these students to better access the curriculum? So, I want to just take a few minutes to talk about those three things. So, students, only students who have IEPs and 504s are counted in this group.
Karen, Karen, and some of the people in the audience can't hear you. Would you mind holding the mic? You can actually take it off of there.
Oh.
Yeah, take it off.
Thank you. So, it's actually students with both IEPs and 504s who are counted in this group, active IEPs and active 504s. And we need to remember that students have these plans specifically because their disability impacts their ability to access the curriculum. That's why they're on a plan to begin with. Students who have disabilities that do not interfere with their access to the curriculum are not on IEPs. And when students with disabilities demonstrate that they can now access the curriculum, they no longer require IEPs and come off of them. It's important for us to remember that because not all disabled students count in this category. Only the ones who have active IEPs or 504s. And also, a very small number of our students and across the state who have the most significant disabilities, it's about 1% across the nation, they take the MCAS Alternative Assessment rather than the MCAS that is reflected in these scores. So, that's important to understand. That's what defines the subgroup. Who are they in Milton? These numbers reflect the actual numbers of students who are in district attending our schools by the varied approved disability categories. If there's a little asterisk next to it, it means that there are additional Milton students, but they're in out-of-district placements. But these are live numbers for Milton children right now. So, when you look at like a large number of kids with communication disabilities, frequently those are kids with speech-language needs. Sometimes they're even much more severe than that. They used to call autism a communication disability, but now it has its own category. So, it's just to understand that that's what our children look like this year right now. And that changes all the time. Oops, I'm sorry. So, important as we look at some of the research that's out there, the Gates Foundation paid for a large study in 2008 to look at the state of special education in, across this country in our high schools. And one of the major themes they came up with in their own executive summary is the following. The disabled population is clearly not monolithic. Across virtually every dimension that can be examined, we find significant differences in outcomes and experiences. Nonetheless, students with disabilities are often discussed by the public and treated by policy as if they were one homogeneous group with a common set of capabilities and needs. The next generation of educational policy and practice should be guided by a more enlightened understanding of the diversity within this population. That's key. It's important. There will not be a one-size-fits-all solution to this. So, moving forward, understanding that, we now understand that it's a very broad question to ask due to the differences between disabilities and the unique nature of every individual student. Different disabilities vary widely in their needs for specific interventions. They are not the same. Within every disability itself, there's a wide range of severity which influences the level of supports every individual student needs. And because of that, that's why we have individual education programs for our kids. So, we need to set the stage by understanding that it's not one group with one general specific intervention that's going to work. So, having said that, what are we going to do? Now, I'm gonna go to the questions. We have to hold those, that information in the back of our head. Now, let's go back to our questions. What has the district doing to close the achievement gap in special ed? Well, first off, six strategies were identified by the National Education Association to address the achievement gap. The school committee has those handouts there.
Karen, can you advance the slides?
I'm sorry? So, these were the six they targeted. And these strategies were really for all of the subgroups in the achievement gap. And I know we've talked about that, you have talked about that and learned about it in this setting, so we won't spend a long time on them. But the six included engage student families, intervene early, target current resources and seek adequate funding, provide comprehensive support to students, build an environment that supports learning, and build classroom environments that support learning. Now, with those things in mind, a number of those initiatives have already been implemented in Milton. We were able to do it because of the advancement budget that was put together for us to address the achievement gap by the generosity of the Milton Foundation for Education when they've given us as well as the budget and how we've targeted our own resources. We've done many of those things, including we have hired recently a parent outreach specialist. In terms of family engagement, Milton is very fortunate because we have very active parents. We have strong PTOs. We have an active special ed parent advisory council. We've invested money in a literacy specialist and early intervention materials. We've purchased a curriculum for our preschool and our kindergarten children to get on board. Our adjustment counselors have been trained in social skills development and positive behavioral intervention systems. We've instituted before and after-school programs, the Pierce Academy, things outside of the school day. And we've brought on new and better curriculum. We've got brand-new science and STEM materials. We've purchased leveled readers, the calculus project. These are all things that were funded by the advancement budget. And all of those things, our special education children participated in along with everybody else. We've also increased inclusion. We've shifted our practice to increase special education students' exposure and access to grade-level curriculum which is aligned to the state's standards. And that's important because the state's standards formulate the state assessment system, and it's the results of the state assessment systems that we're using to measure progress and that are defining the achievement gap. So, for our kids to take those tests, they have to be in front of that curriculum. To do that, we've expanded our understanding of the differences between accommodations and modifications for kids on IEPs. So briefly, accommodations provide different ways for kids to take in information and to communicate their knowledge. The changes basically don't alter or lower the standards or expectation for any subject or test. This would include variations of presentation, for example, books on tape, enlarged print, a scribe to write for a student, directions read aloud. It would include pre-teaching skills, giving students a word box ahead of time before the reading selection, giving them and reviewing math formulas before they're presented with them, organizational support afterwards and before. It includes providing them with the necessary tools that they might need, like a calculator or a graphic organizer or a math reference checklist or the assistive technology, which we're gonna talk about separately. Giving them those things are accommodations to help them access the curriculum. However, modifications are actual changes to the delivery, to the content, to the instructional level. And when modifications are made, kids with disabilities are not expected to master the same academic content of others in the classroom. And why does that matter? It matters because MCAS and PARC assessments measure achievement based on the state's standards by grade level. So, if students are taught using modified curriculum or materials during MCAS or PARC, they may find themselves being evaluated on content or material or looking at examples that they've not yet been exposed to. It makes a difference. So, with this understanding, understanding these things, what have we been doing within our schools now to increase and reinforce special ed students' access and success with the curriculum? In our elementary schools, special education providers have steadily shifted their mindset of inclusion as the default. Pull-out services should only be happening as necessary to supplement what's going on in the classroom with pre-teaching or remediation. Our speech and occupational therapists increasingly are integrating the classroom curriculum as the vehicle for their work. So, rather than our speech-language person asking me, can I buy this series of books to use, to go over language with children, she's using the language exercises from the classroom. So, in this way, they are reinforcing the classroom curriculum in one additional step. At the Pierce Middle School, last year, actually the spring before, the team revamped their special education offerings and last year instituted some changes to how the team setup was going on. Transitions classes that had a modified curriculum were discontinued. Those children are now put into co-taught sections. The team teaching and co-teaching of ELA and math was with two teachers. A paraprofessional was available at every grade level to support students in social studies and science. A second class for additional instruction or remediation was then made available for kids who needed additional support with a special ed teacher. So, the first presentation was in the classroom with the curriculum, and then a second presentation for support was made available. They had two doses of instruction. That happened last year and it's in place again this year at the Pierce. At the high school, we had a similar conversation and last year for the, we added co-taught courses here at Milton High. Again, those transition classes that were substantially separate special ed classes taught by a special ed teachers were eliminated. Students were put in inclusion classes. We had co-taught ELA, co-taught math, and co-taught biology last year and again this year. A second class for additional instruction or remediation has always been available in academic support, but last year and this year, we're also offering a focused one. So, academic support in ELA or academic support in math for kids who are targeted for needing that extra dose of instruction. That's what we've been doing. We've also increased our use of assistive technology. We got a lot of good donations from MFE and it's out in our schools and it's being used. We're using iPads and laptops and Chromebooks in all of our schools. Students who previously required a scribe instead are being acclimated to keyboards, allowing them more independence. Communication software such as ProloQuo is made available for some of our non-verbal students. That's in several of our elementary schools right now. We had an exciting opportunity with one of our students to pilot a camera mouse program. This student is non-verbal, multi-handicapped, but this allowed him to use his eyes to move the cursor on the monitor. It was fascinating to watch and for us to learn. And it allowed him, for the first time, to take steps towards communicating with others and have choice or agency in his world. It was a fascinating thing for us to learn. We have made a great deal of use of books on tape, far more that's been happening in the past. Learning Ally is an agency that collects and distributes materials on tape or now actually downloads. We partnered with Learning Ally last year. They have a grant from the state such that so many students in our state can access this free of charge, both at home and through school. And at the secondary level, at the middle and high school, they're using it madly with a lot of kids. This can be textbooks, it can be novels. Parents can access it at home once their children are signed up. Kids can access it and their teachers can access it. For our hearing impaired kids, we've got FM systems in, I think, five of our schools right now, which include sound field towers, or they might include individual microphones and receivers called boots that go on hearing aids for our hearing impaired kids. And before, we just recently hired a special ed, not special ed, but a technology specialist who's going to help us learn how to integrate that. But prior to her being here, we found a special education assistive technology consultant that we've been using now for three years in our district, that we tap to use for specific children, or I've tapped her to go to certain schools when they got a bunch of new iPads to work with teachers about how best to use them. So, we've been using that, that technology before we had the person, but now we've got a person of our own. So, when we talk about what research is available to address the issue, I will remind you that we learned that our kids are all different. It's not gonna be one thing. So, I'm gonna take it broadly and bring it down. A lot of things changed with the IDEA, Individuals with Disability Act, that started in 1990 and was reauthorized in 2004. It made changes. A major change was that it defined, it mandated, that to the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities, including children in public or private institutions, will be educated with children who are non-disabled. Special classes, special, separate schooling, or other removal of children with disabilities from the regular ed environment can occur only when the nature or severity of the disability is such that education without this can't be achieved satisfactorily. And therein is the gray area. Because there are some folks, there are different schools of thought. There are some folks who might say, well, my child needs reading in a quiet setting, one-to-one over here for 30 minutes a day. That is one school of thought. A different school of thought is, no, she needs to have reading in her classroom with everyone else because all those minutes you're pulling her out, she's losing time or discussion that's going on in the classroom. IDEA mandated that it not happen, but there are gray areas. So, that's, that sets the stage for how we want to proceed. Dr. Thomas here actually wrote this book, New Directions in Special Education. He's pretty much renowned internationally as an expert in special education. He, did I turn this on? Did he do a study that the State Department of Education? Dr. Here, Dr. Here was commissioned by the State Department of Education in 2012 to complete a study of special education in Massachusetts. A lot of findings came out of that study, but a really important theme came up. And he discovered that students with disabilities who spend more time educated with their typically developing peers, on average, will earn higher scores on MCAS. So, for me, that directly relates to the question that was asked of us. How can we, what can we do differently? So, having said that, from that, we wonder, how can that, how can that happen with students with a variety of disabilities in the classroom? Well, another direct result of IDEA was something called Response to Intervention. It came directly from IDEA. And what that is, is a system of educating all students using a three-tier system to diagnose students with disabilities based on their responses to increasingly intensive interventions. So, when we say diagnose students with disabilities, that means they're starting with no disabilities before we even find them that they're disabled. So, this is RTI, Response to Intervention, applies to all students. And basically, what that is, is there are three tiers for instruction. The regular classroom instruction, all the students. Then, if the student isn't succeeding based on assessments, then they move to the next level, Tier Two, which is intensified small group instruction on top of the regular class instruction. And if that's not working after a period of assessments have checked back and forth, then they move to individualized instruction on top of the classroom instruction. So, none of these tiers includes removing the student from the classroom. They include adding additional supports. If the individualized instruction doesn't work, then a student is put forward for special education referral. And this completes the pre-referral progress, but what happens is along the way, students' needs get met and then they don't end up in special education. It's a teaching methodology. So, in Massachusetts, the state put together their own version of RTI. I put in the school committee's packet something called the Mass Tiered System of Support. This is their blueprint and it outlines one single system of supports that is responsive to both the academic and non-academic needs of all students. This blueprint, the Mass Tiered System of Supports, is a framework for school improvement that focuses on system-level change across the classroom, the school, and the district to meet both academic and non-academic needs for all students. This includes students with disabilities, English language learners, as well as students who are academically advanced. This addresses all of them. So, there's a wonderful chart here. Okay. And it tries to, in chart form, explain how it is. Remember, we said Response to Intervention, RTI, was three levels: full class, small group support, and individual support. Basically, this is a two-sided problem. One of it is exactly RTI, which we described. You can see Tier One, core instruction, universal behavioral supports. Tier Two, supplement, plus the core. Tier Three is individual plus the core. The same is true for kids with behavioral or social-emotional problems. So, simultaneously, in parallel, there are tiers of interventions for both social-emotional indicators as well as academic indicators. It's a really interesting model that the state put together. They've suggested that districts adopt it. They haven't mandated it, but it's kind of a nice suggestion because it takes into consideration academic needs and social-emotional needs simultaneously, addressing them in various ways. So, part of that, part of the MTSS says that schools and districts are encouraged to work toward an integrated support approach to support students' academic and social emotional, not one or the other, doing it together. That all students receive academic instruction and behavioral supports that include differentiation and extension activities that are guided by three universal design-for-learning principles. We'll talk about that, it's the next layer of what I want to tell you about. Universal design, or UDL, is a way that includes multiple means of representation, multiple means of action and expressions, and multiple means of engagement. And I've provided for the school committee a question and answer, but I think the chart that I gave you is probably the most illustrative about how UDL works. So, universal design for learning is an educational framework. It's based on research for the past 10 years in learning sciences. It includes, the research includes cognitive neuroscience that guides the development of flexible learning environments that can accommodate the differences individuals have in their learning. This is accomplished by simultaneously providing rich supports for learning while reducing the barriers to the curriculum and maintaining high achievement and standards. UDL has, it's, in Massachusetts, is an agency called CAS that does a lot of professional development in it. So, a universally-designed curriculum is designed from the outset to meet the needs of the greatest number of users, making costly, time-consuming, and after-the-fact changes unnecessary to the curriculum if you start by planning for everyone. It's intended to increase access to learning by reducing physical, cognitive, intellectual, and organizational barriers to learning as well as any other obstacles that are there. So, specifically, they look at, by providing options for multiple means of representation of the material, to give learners various ways of taking in or acquiring the information, multiple means of expressing what they know, alternatives for demonstrating aside from just paper and pencil, and multiple means of engaging learners to tap into their own interests and challenges and to motivate them to learn. On these three strands make up the framework for universal design for learning. So, moving on to our next question, what's our plan moving forward? I've shared some information with you that talks- I've shared some information with you that talks about what we can do for all children. Moving forward, we've talked about some things we think maybe should happen. The first thing we think needs to happen is that we need to evaluate the efficacy of our special education programs, a formal program evaluation. This was last done in Milton in the year 2009-10. I believe the Walker Partnerships were the people who did that. We believe we need to assess various models of co-teaching that are in place here in Milton. There's at least three that I know of. And research what other ways we could be providing inclusive opportunities. We need to assess the efficacy of our special education staff deployment, and see if perhaps we should consider other options. For example, we have 43 special education teachers in our district. Not related service, not speech, not adjustment councils. We have 43 special education teachers. Are we maximizing the best way to use them? That should be something that we take a look at. The next thing we think we need to do is assess the need for additional special education teachers in readiness for next year's budget. We need to sit down and look at that with my colleagues in the leadership team and talk about what we need. For example, there are six grades in every one of our elementary schools, when you count K through five. And if in each grade, there are two to four classrooms in every school, if we increase inclusion to be almost full-time in every classroom, we're going to need more special education teachers to do that. There are six different grades, all those different classrooms. It's going to cost us more teachers. We need to determine, do we need additional co-teaching sections at the middle school? We're on our second year of that model. We think it's working well. We need to assess, do we need to continue it and grow it? And we need to increase our co-teaching sections at the high school. They've been successful, do we need more? This needs to be discussed and decided. The third thing we need to move forward is we need to determine what professional development we wish to explore. Some, some of the things that I've talked about and some of the suggestions I have include understanding universal design for learning. That would be for all of our teachers, not just special ed. We need to work on the use of data to determine focused interventions. That's another suggestion. The development of a district commitment to RTI or the MTSS model. And again, that's all schools, not one school, all teachers, not just special education. We need to continue to work on understanding models and methods of co-teaching, a consistent understanding and application of accommodations versus modifications in every child's IEP. And we need to continue to learn, all of our staff need to, are at different places with their understanding of the efficacy of the use of assistive technology. That needs to continue. So what are our expected outcomes? Ideally, if we're setting goals for ourselves, we would like to see that an increased number of special education students will have the special ed support they need to access and succeed in general ed settings. That would be goal one. With that, increased exposure to grade-level curriculum, our hope is that it will result in increased performance on MCAS and PRC. And with that, the achievement gap in special education should steadily decrease, as more special ed students demonstrate proficiency on these assessments. That's the hope. Those are our expected outcomes. So in order to do that, what resources are needed? Obviously, we'll need funding to do some of the things we'd like to do. A special, a formal special ed program review will have a cost factor. We're actually already looking into possibilities for where we might get that done. If we add additional special ed teaching positions at our schools, that would have a cost factor. To get professional development, that is district-wide professional development, would have a cost factor. If we're looking at UDL, or RTI, or MTSS, or co-teaching strategies, all of those should happen across the district, not just for special ed teachers. A co-teaching professional development opportunity is no good if it doesn't have both partners in the room. We sent a lot of our co-teaching partners last year to really good professional development. But if we really want to move our district, we have to send them all, or have someone come here and do it. So these are the things we need in terms of resources. So having said that, I thought I would share the data with you, the special ed data with you, and I'm going to share it with you two different ways. So as my principal colleagues are going to, I'm going to share with you the data for how our special ed kids did at each grade level, in proficient and advanced. This is how they did per grade level, for three years in a row. So you see in grade three, though we went from 24% to 23%, it's of significantly more children. It was 24% of 46 children last year in grade three. This year, it's of 60 children. It makes a difference. Percentages tell you one part of the story, but when I put the X to it, as of 60 in grade three, there were 60 third graders who took that test, right? So moving down, you can see that we improved in grade five, we improved in grade seven, and we improved in grade eight. But our numbers went up in different places and down in different places, and that's a different story. Data always tells you different stories. That's ELA. In math, again, you see the numbers of students at each grade changed. We went up in math in grade three, we went up in grade five, we went up in grade eight, and we went up in grade 10. So we're moving in the right direction in some areas. And in some areas, it targets where we have work to do. So the other way I'm going to show you the information is through the growth model. And the growth model, in K-12, the phrase "growth model" describes a method of measuring individual students' progress on statewide assessments by tracking the scores of the same students from one year to the next. And each student's growth is measured relative to other students who perform the same way. So for example, if a special education student in the fourth grade got a 210 on the MCAS ELA, he would be compared to other special educations in the fourth grade who got a 210. And his growth would be measured against theirs. So we'd actually be comparing apples to apples, instead of apples to oranges. So the growth model, when we use that, allows districts and schools to more easily identify promising or potentially struggling programs, and therefore to look deeper into what might work or what might not be working. So let's take a look at this. The green dot represents the growth of our special education students in math. And then though it doesn't show so well on the slide, between 40 and 60%, if you're growing between 40 and 60%, that's considered the good area. And that would be on the horizontal line going forward. So the yellow dot represents the growth of our general ed students, while the green represents the growth of our special ed. They're not that far apart horizontally. It means they're growing. The next slide shows it in ELA. Same thing. Achievement-wise, there's a difference. Growth-wise, it's not that very much different. Our special education children are growing. We are moving in the right direction. So with that information, I don't know if you have questions for us, or you tell me.
I'm going to get the lights for you.
Okay. Let me just say a word about my intentions here. I think for this presentation, which was quite data-rich, and for the subsequent presentation, MCAS data, I would intend to include agenda items for follow-up discussions at our October 15 meeting. So feel free to ask your questions now, but there will be another opportunity to do so at the next meeting. Ms. Padere.
So one of the things you said closer to the beginning of your presentation, I thought was really interesting, Dr. Klasby, sorry. Now, can you hear me? Is the state, do you know if the state is looking at trying to compare different disabilities and looking at scores that way? Would be my first question. And second, do we have the data within each school or each program to do that? Like, can we look at the data and see? Because until the end, I was thinking, well, what's the growth? Because you probably start off at a different place anyway, and if we're, our special education students are growing, especially like for the administrators' teachers, special education teachers, to be able to break that down and say, students with this disability are responding great to this intervention, and these students are not. Can you do that now, in order to kind of pinpoint which, maybe which disabilities were not affecting as much with the strategies we're trying?
So I, I think that's a really great question. And with the data, once the data is collected, you can almost sort it in a thousand different ways, really. And anybody in education has played with the, they call it Edwin Analytics on the DESE website, but it's a, it's a complicated and time-intensive thing. So we're hoping that some of our new data integration people can help us do some of those exact things, right? Because I agree with you. I think, I would love to see that data. Like, how do our communication impaired kids do on this? Our SLD kids, because that's a huge umbrella. So I, it's definitely doable, but it would take a great deal of time. And hopefully, when we get a new data person in here, that's the kind of thing we'd love for them to do, I'd love for them to do.
Well, I'd just like to say, because that could be really helpful in terms of repressing force, in terms of the budget, and looking for different things, to say, well, these are the things we've had the greatest success with, because with these groups, this is what we've seen. I think that would be really helpful in us determining, you know, what's moving, moving forward, what's working, and what maybe isn't, hasn't worked as well.
And you know, you're saying something that the research pulled out, too. Because a few of the studies that I just referenced in there briefly, what they agreed with is that people continue to look at it as one lump thing, instead of looking at, what are we doing, what is working, and what's not for various populations? The research isn't there. People are starting to note that and talk about that, and that's important for us, too.
Great. Thank you. I, I just want to add to that, if I may. So I think that that's where the interventions come into play. And truly, when, this was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. It was so thorough and gave, I think, a tremendous overview to people who don't have a solid understanding of special education and all that it entails. So thank you for that. But just to speak to your point, Becky, because I think that what was described here under RTI, the interventions that take place at Tier Two and Tier Three, those are short-term, maybe like eight weeks or six weeks, depending on what the intervention is. It might be 12 weeks. And at the end of that time, the data is, you know, collected again, to see if they need to continue with an intervention, or for a different intervention. So it's, it's not even waiting till the end of the year. It's just that ongoing data collection that happens, you know, and then you're looking at the UDL, and what, you know, what, what's being used for that. So I mean, it's so, it's very complex and multi-layered, but I think you did a great job at.
If I could just add, that when we talk about, like, the assessments and the interventions and the data that's collected, so much of that stuff is being done in pieces in our district. We've got the benchmark assessments that were finally developed and are in place, and those are being used to direct instruction now at our elementary level. And this is fabulous work. So my suggestion is that we look at RTI as a group and have a consistent application throughout our district, and that takes kind of district-level commitment and PD as a group. So thank you for saying that, because that's important.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Hi. I'm sorry I got here late. It was a great presentation. I forget. Sorry I got here late, and it was a great presentation. I was really glad to see that you talked about inclusion, being done right will cost money. Because when it's done right, as you know, Lynda Lee, it is a wonderful thing for both kids with special needs and for kids who don't have learning challenges. But it does cost money to do it right, versus just throwing a bunch of kids in and saying that's inclusion. So I'm really glad to hear you say that. I was also really glad to hear you include social-emotional health. For the next time you come, I would really like to hear, and you're preaching to the choir in terms of the RTI and the other things, but I really would like to hear specific examples of like what Lynda Lee, what you just said about at eight weeks, at 12 weeks. What are the interventions we're doing? And I particularly am interested in what are you doing around the social-emotional intervention needs, intervention and needs of kids with learning challenges and without learning challenges? So when you come back the next time, I'd like really concrete examples, because I think this is all great, but how does it actually play out? Like, that great circle graph you gave us? Yes, that's great, but what specifically is happening on that great graph?
And so just to be clear, I don't think we're there yet on that graph. We are there in a lot of different places on that graph, and it would be great to have a concerted effort and really make a commitment to do it as a district. So I think we're doing some fabulous things, but it's inconsistent in different schools, right?
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Zouzis.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. That was a great presentation, very helpful. There's two of the slides that I want to ask you about, and that is, when you, when you showed the percentage of special education students scoring proficient and advanced, and, and in a number of the grades, they went up from 2013. But if you look at the trend from 2012 to 2014, we saw declines, really, except for grade seven and 10, it appears. And, and my question, if, if, if that's the progression, 2012 through 2014, is that something that we should be concerned about?
It's hard to answer that question, because, you know, when we look at the horizontal grade three year after year, we have to remember, those are different kids. So if we're looking at the grade three in 2012, that group is actually the grade four in 2013, who's actually the grade five in 2014. So data tells you many different stories, and so you can look at it that way, or you can look at it this way. So looking at it horizontally, that, I think, points to, what are our teachers doing? What's working, what's not working? As well as who are the kids? Because that's really the truth. Looking at it diagonally is sort of saying, how is this cluster of kids doing over time? Is it that the, the curriculum becomes harder in grade four? Yes, we know grade four is difficult. Or, or is it that something else is going on? Is there something that stands out? So I think the diagonal look is looking at the same children' progress. The horizontal look is kind of looking at, how are we doing with our curriculum adaptation at that grade level? Of course, overlaid with, who are those special ed kids that particular year? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. That's helpful. And then my second question is, in terms of the plan, the, the three things, the evaluation and the additional teachers and the professional development, I'm interested in, I'm sure you haven't thought about our developed costs, but in terms of timing, when we're developing our budget, as you, I'm sure you know, we're developing our budget in November, December, January. So you mentioned additional teachers for the 2015, 2016. So the question is, are we on a timing schedule so that we're going to see some proposals for the, in these three areas, for this budget year, for 2015, 16?
I think that that's a conversation for the whole leadership team, not just me, because there's lots of priorities in our district. So in terms of, you know, what we'd like, getting a program evaluation, a good one done, we might not get results till the end of the year. And that's okay, because it's always going to inform our practice. Having an internal conversation with my colleagues about, what do you think about Sped in your school? What could we do? We've had a lot of those conversations, but really sitting down and say, if we could, if we could put it together and try it a different way, what would we need? We could do that this year, but it's a whole leadership thing. It's not something that I can individually say. And same with the PD. I can look, there's a lot of free PD out there, but when we're looking to really make a, a game-changing shift in how we provide special education, it should be a district view. And whether that's the priority for the district or not, is a full collaborative conversation.
So Karen, on those three things, you can see, could you see them moving in parallel? Evaluation and teachers and development, rather than evaluation and then, you know, one or two years down the line, the other two?
They could. It, it could be that the district says, let's do the evaluation first, and then after that, see how we should move forward. And then we're looking at a two- or a three-year plan. There's lots of different ways, and that might be a smarter way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you very much. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I, I think it's something that really will help the district as we move forward. A couple of questions, just on some of the data that you had in there. So the number of students in district that are, and I think you described it as, on IEPs and/or 504s? So has the number of students gone down? I mean, some data on how we've been doing year, you know, in, in terms of what students' needs do we need to meet, sort of over several years, I think, would be helpful. But your sense is that that number's going down?
I, I think that we, I know that we have done some work to clarify eligibility criteria. In other words, we've really done some internal work to say, what defines this disability? What defines this disability? And in so doing, and we, you know, and the district had its CPR from the state, and there were certain things recommended that we do. So we're trying to have some fidelity with how we do our eligibility determinations, and we're doing the, there's a whole structure for determining specific learning disability. And so that, following that, with some fidelity, really has allowed us to weed out a student who's performing, not at a high level, but may not be disabled. So I, in my view, I think the numbers probably have gone down, but I don't want to say that without having them in my pocket for you. So I'll come back to you with that.
Thank you. And then on, sort of, it looks like a big decision tree, but maybe it's just my interpretation, the development of the district RTI or MTSS model. How does a district go about deciding which way should we go? Or is it a, do you use it, you know, do some grades in, in classrooms use one model and some use the other? How do other districts do it, I guess would be the way?
I think that RTI is sort of one half of the MTSS model, and you can't, you can't really do it by a class. It would be, a school would have a model that they're doing. So it could be a school model, or it could be a district model, right? It could be, all four elementary schools will do it this way, or it could be, we'll do it like this in our school. So, because there's different facets of the RTI model, that, you know, we're using a lot more data to make decisions about kids and where they go and what we're giving them. So that's a feature of RTI, but there's more than that to it. So it wouldn't be by class, it would be a school version or a district version.
Which is great. That definitely lends clarity. But I guess I'm asking the administration, so how do we go about deciding that? I mean, I think that sort of sets us up for at least what we need in the future, and so, I'm not sure what that process looks like, but I would like...
so I'm not sure what that process looks like, but I would like to hear that in a future You had mentioned some assistive technology and different programs, et cetera, that are at some schools, maybe not at all. Is that a, a resource issue in terms of not having enough funds, or that the students in a particular school don't need that resource? I guess I want to make sure that there's, well, if, if there's immediate needs, that our resources, that our other kids with the same disabilities might be having advantage of in one school, that we get them to the other schools in as quick a, a time as possible?
Absolutely all getting what they need. When I said at certain schools, it's because I was, I was, in my head, I was counting the kids and where they were. That's really all.
Great. I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thanks as well for the presentation. We voted some time at our finance subcommittee in giving you some feedback, and it looks like you incorporated most of that. So thank you to you and Superintendent and to Ms. Sheehan, all of whom I know worked very hard on this. I have a few questions, most of which I'm going to defer till, till our next meeting. But the one that I have for you tonight is, as we've become more sophisticated about executing on our advancement initiatives, I think one of the things that we've been very rigorous about was developing individualized action plans for any student that was performing at the warning or needs improvement level. And I think you've acknowledged, and as have we, that our sped population is just as diverse in, in different ways as our general population is. So understanding that they have, our students in sped have IEPs, do you anticipate that there will also be some more work in determining specific strategies based on where they are, what their disability is, and so on? That will allow us to, to be more specific about how we plan to accelerate progress and achieve greater achievement?
I think that what I was trying to show by, you know, beginning to, starting with IDEA and how that turned into RTI, and how RTI comes now as MTSS, which includes a lot of universal design, that I think that that's the flow that we should take. And that means specifically at the school level and at the IEP level, when those are being developed, for the teams to really, and the teachers, the special ed teachers, when they're saying, what do you think we should be doing? Their default response should be, what can I do in the classroom, rather than a default of, I think I'll pull her in my office for reading twice a week. And so that is a shift for some of our educators in their practice. And so getting people and teams of people and parents, because they get a vote too, at these IEP meetings to agree that this is the best case. It gets into that gray area, Mr. Walker, that I was saying, there's, there's gradations of decisions about whether or not this is a good idea versus that idea. And that's why the team meeting process, sometimes it can work with you, with our staff, but it can't always go the way, I can't dictate it. Do you know what I mean? The team has to decide for every individual. We can certainly train up our staff so that they know best-case scenario, and moving forward, we can talk to them about that. And I think we need to continue those conversations with them about that. And that's the direction that we need to go in.
Okay, I'd close with, I'll be interested in how we get there and when we get there. Ms. Sheridan?
So I just have one, not a question, but a comment about the going-forward piece of this. And I think that as we begin or embark upon a program review, we also have to think about the policy side of that and some of the impacts that might come about because of changes. If we move to more inclusion models, then there might be some policy implications of things that have to be explored. So I just want to put them on the table.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
So the, the new person who's with us for technology, are they sped certified?
No, but they have Dr. Angela Barca's experience with special education, and she's already sat down with Karen Klasby and gone, and sat down with every principal. And when we're sitting down, she's only been with us three weeks, her issues around special education are rising in every school about the needs around technology.
So I guess it sounds like you have someone or a, or a resource that you've been utilizing. I would hope that we continue to use that, and maybe there's a transition period if we can get to that point, but it sounds like you're making great strides with the use of that assistance. So I guess I would encourage you to continue using that. And then I know everyone's probably waiting for me to say this, but part of analysis in the, in the special education and our ability to meet the needs of our kids, I think especially at the, at the elementary level, will come to how are our children distributed in classrooms? And I think we need to know that. So I guess I would ask that as a follow-up piece of data for our discussion as we move forward, is, you know, how are these students distributed amongst?
Oh, certainly.
Well, two things. One, I've taken down your questions, and if you have additional questions, if you forward them to Ms. Klasby and me for the next meeting, and then we'll do a follow-up. As I sat here, I think it would be a valuable presentation for the PAC, widely publicized and have the parents and community members attend in a smaller forum. Two years ago, when we implemented the CAP in French immersion, we worked with a Milton parent who is a professor at Boston College, nationally renowned in data analysis, program analysis, Dr. Laura O'Dwyer. And so to your point, Ms. Kelly, you had asked, so Dr. O'Dwyer has taken all of our MCAS data, met with our entire elementary leadership team of principals and coordinators. She brought a teaching assistant, and again, on another volunteer basis, she's analyzing our French and English data, and to the subgroup data, that we actually have the growth data on every single child by program, by classroom. And she's analyzing the data by subgroups within both programs. We met the other day, she did a presentation for all of us, and out of that presentation came another 20 questions. So she's coming back again next week with a presentation. I could ask any school community members who are available if they were free to come, perhaps send the presentation to you, because the presentation presents more questions, and we're going to bring that to you. So it's really to a level, two years ago, that we wouldn't have even thought of asking about the program analysis. So I hope that you'll be pleased. And again, this would be a huge project for us to put out in a contract, and she's doing it for the Milton Public Schools.
Which, I mean, I think we're all so grateful for. What I hope in that we now have our own technology person or data specialist, is that they coordinate. This to me is an integral part of how we evaluate year over year over year. And if we don't, if we just only do it every couple of years, I think we miss opportunities. And, and so I hope that we can, you know, get some learning there, that this can be carried on internally as we move forward.
And to that point, we've hired, in the advancement budget, we hired the technology administrator, the educational technology person for the district. And again, she's been in classrooms across the district. We've hired the parent liaison as a result of the advancement budget. We've done a tremendous amount of interviewing on the data specialist. With this MCAS data, we began to work with one individual. We did a lot of interviewing with individuals from Boston College and Harvard. So we haven't finalized that hire. We haven't found the perfect match of the individual yet, but we have somebody that we've had several interviews with. So when we finally have that person in place, I'll bring them to the table so that all of you and the public can meet them.
Ms. Bagley Jones, then Ms. Kelly.
Two things that I wanted to ask that we could have in this time, is I would like to see data on the inclusion models that are out there, the pros and cons, you know, what do they look like? What are the, you might not know the cost, but what's the personnel? Oh, sorry, what's the personnel in the inclusion models? And also, you don't have to talk about it now, but the outside agencies that we've used in the past, NECC and programs like that, that, what we still have, what we don't have? And then also, I would be curious to get your thoughts about what would it be like to provide more specific special ed, special education services to kids, regardless of what language program they were in? So what would it look like to get an inclusion classroom, or, I don't know, some services for kids that might want to go into the French immersion program but can't because they have a special learning need? So what would that look like? And how could you help us with that?
You got all that?
Ms. Kelly?
So my last two questions. I'm not sure what the scope of the program review is, but if there are resources that are needed, the sooner that we can find out how much that will cost, I think we can start looking for where those resources could come from.
And Mrs. Kelly, too, in discussions with Mary Kelly about this program review, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but in discussing with you, we said perhaps it could be staged, and we wouldn't have to wait until June. In our discussions, we haven't secured the individual yet, but I think it's a creative idea that we don't have to wait for an unveiling in June. We could have a staged approach and bring recommendations to you during the year. That was one of your ideas, wasn't it?
Yes, that was. And I think I've just forgotten my last comment, so.
I interrupt you, that's why I'm sorry.
It'll come back to me.
Moving on. Madam Superintendent?
Ms. Kelly?
Oh, Ms. Kelly has remembered her last question.
Sorry, the foggy brain, it just cleared. So, you know, can you point to other districts that are much further along in this process than we are? That, you know, we might get a glimpse of, examples of what they're doing? Because I think that would be helpful, even from the perspective of just to understand, because you, you've talked about a lot of different things that will impact the present classroom, and how that all works together. I think that would be really helpful.
I can share the experience I had in my previous district where we moved to full inclusion, as well as some of the other districts that are doing a great job, like Newton does a great job. So it would be fun to pull some of that interesting information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll gather all of this, these questions and issues, and invite Ms. Klasby back to our October 15th meeting for a follow-up. And I'd invite anyone who has questions in the audience or at the table to forward them to us.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Klasby. I'd like to invite, on your agenda, we have changed the format over the years, when the site councils came, each principal would do a detailed analysis of their data, and some of the presentations would run into the spring. So at the school committee's request, last year, you asked that all the principals come and present the MCAS data, and then when the high school comes, they'll do the SAT and AP data, specific to the individual schools. So we have tonight our entire principal leadership team here to share the MCAS data with you. So I'd invite the principals to the table, please. And we've also invited tonight Courtney Miller Walsh, previously known as Courtney Walsh, not going by Courtney Walsh or Courtney Walsh Miller, Courtney Miller, to the table, who has a, who is agreed after the presentation. I had a question, which I think the viewing public might have, and Courtney has an additional presentation to our principals. So welcome this evening. Thank you on behalf of the district for an outstanding beginning to the school year and all of your work, and coming out tonight to share the district's MCAS data. And so for those of individuals in the audience and the viewing public who might not know our principals, I'd ask you to introduce yourselves and the principals that the schools your principals of, before we begin the presentation.
Evening.
Well, I think, if I might, could make myself clear, perhaps, so to make this more comfortable for so many of you, should we pass down a mic so that you're not having to pass that mic? Maybe if we all move a mic, would that be difficult to move a mic down? Give them an additional mic? So they have to speak into the mic, right?
Yes.
James Chet, Principal of Milton High School.
I am Holly Concanon, the Principal of the Collicott School.
Hi, Sheila Cox, Principal Glover School.
Eileen McNeil-Germay, Principal at Tucker School.
Karen Spalding, Principal at the Pierce Middle School.
John Redden, Principal of the Cunningham Elementary School.
And Courtney Miller, the Math Business and Technology Department Chair at Milton High School.
Thank you, and welcome. We'll turn it over to you, and you have a presentation in your packets or on your computers. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you.
So thank you for having us. We're really excited to share our presentation with you tonight. We are going to be walking through our 2014 MCAS results and the corresponding focus areas that we've identified for them.
Yeah, thanks.
So we'll, we'll begin with each of the levels by reviewing the ways that we look at the data. And then at the different levels, we'll be looking also at how the data translates into our focus areas and how we're currently addressing these concerns. We'll do that at each of the different levels, the elementary has a presentation together. And then finally, we'll be sharing some updates on the advancement initiatives, looking ahead to this year.
So I won't read the list to you, because you can see it, but we just wanted to say out loud that there are a number of ways that we look at the data. We look at the data by student, we look at the data by standards, we're able to disaggregate the data, we're able to use tools that let us peel back multiple layers to really dig into and pinpoint areas of relative strength and relative weakness. And we, with the more looking at data, come up with more questions, and then dig more into a variety of slices and ways of, of looking at what we have before us.
So when do we look at the data? And it varies from level to level. At the elementary school, they have grade-level meetings every other week, data and analysis meetings, requires class coverage. They make arrangements to get the coverage so they could have those conversations as a group. The middle school level, they also have the common planning time that they utilize. They have regular meetings with the leadership bi-weekly. At the high school level, to give you some examples, I'm very pleased as, as the principal of the high school that works, of our guidance department head, Karen Cahill, and our department heads, to really tweak our schedule, to give us some common planning time for the first year in a long time, I think, maybe even ever, that they had common planning time by content areas. At all three levels, they have the opportunity to have principal meetings every month. Sometimes those principal meetings alternate between curriculum meetings, so this is the opportunity when we look at the data. One of the things, the team right here starts looking at the data, and at the high school with the department heads as well.